Let me get my agenda. The June 17, 2019 San Carlos Planning Commission meeting is now open. Will you please join me, rise and pledge allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have a roll call?
Commissioner Dugan?
Here.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Here.
Vice Chair Bergman?
And Chair Bradley.
And I would just like to note for the record that Commissioner Roof is absent this evening.
Okay, thank you. The next item is appointment of officers. Let me ask the staff. The blurb that we usually use for public hearings appears here, but we don't need that, do we? For items off the agenda, I mean. We should have items off the agenda first.
Yes, if you would like to switch the order of the agenda and do public comment first, you may do that and then go back to appointment of officers.
That's what I would like to do. Public comment pursuant to the municipal code section 2.24.140. This is the wrong one.
Thank you, yeah, I was just gonna...
Oh, we'll get organized in a minute. Here is "Public Comment Is Limited to Items Not on the Agenda. The Planning Commission May Briefly Respond to Statements Made or Questions Posued, as Allowed by the Brown Act. However, the Planning Commission's general policy here in San Carlos is to refer items to the planning staff for their attention or have a matter placed on a future Planning Commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report." Is there any public comment? Yes, will you come up and state your name and tell us why you're here? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Heather. We met last, two weeks ago. And I represent both as a San Carlos taxpayer and property owner of the property adjacent to 817, the property that you reviewed two weeks ago. Specifically, 801 Walnut is a property that is impacted by the approval that was done two weeks ago. And at that meeting, you know, I attended both the community events, I read the documents that were available, and it appeared through the approval process that decisions were made after the last couple of weeks based on possible misinformation or lack of information or lack of data that had been provided to the council. So for the last couple of weeks, I spent the last of my own personal time, you know, researching some of the things that I thought might be important to the council. And I thought that was something that you might want to answer as a group or find interesting by yourself. The first is, one of the discussion points that you had was regarding electrical vehicle parking within the parking lift system. And there was a discussion about whether that was possible or not possible. What was interesting is I found in their own City Lift literature that it is possible. And I thought that was something that, as a community, if we're going to have a system that is going to be for the 60 to 75-year term, that that is something that should be considered and incorporated into it. But during the meeting, the opposite was stated. And I found that it's just an interesting data point for your consideration. The second was regarding ADA. And there was a discussion about the parking spaces that were available. I learned, according to City Lift's own documentation, that if you design the City Lift system with the right sort of bay and, you know, configuration, that you can actually expand the ADA capability within the own system and the way you design that. And I thought that was also an interesting, you know, data point. But the primary concern I had was the discussion about noise. And I had read the Sequel Report, and it said that there should be 60 to 65 not an issue. And during the discussion with the council, I was befuddled by the fact that nobody attending could answer the information regarding the impact of the City Lift system or the operation of the mechanical equipment within that specific configuration. And I, part of the reason why I'm bringing this up is that approval was made without that information. And in the last couple of weeks, I decided that I would do some, you know, I would research it myself. I actually visited eight different City Lift locations over the last two weeks. Six were in operation, one was still under development, and one was still not under construction. I pertinently witnessed it, I talked to residents, I talked to parking attendants, I talked to people who used it. And I found some interesting information. You know, this project, absolutely, I understand the city of San Carlos, we understand that that type of system, that type of configuration, we understand that that's going to happen. We get that. But it also needs to be done correctly and with the right information and decision that's educated and informed. And I'm concerned about some of the things that I learned over the last two weeks. Specifically, the Sequel Report references specific decibel levels. The property next door, because of the setback changes that were approved, is now nine feet away from the wall that has the City Lift system in place. In addition, if you look carefully at the plans, it appears as though there are blatant openings that are just cavernous between the two floors of windows for tenants who live there, next to the City Lift system, and they seem to be openings. I don't know if they're glass, but they seem to be openings. When I visited all of these City Lift installations, 100% of them had solid, what appeared to be thick walls that were barriers, sound barriers, that provided some sort of sound mitigation between that and their surrounding, you know, locales. In addition, the openings that they did have were smaller. They were either like a C-shaped, so it was only a portion of it, but they didn't have, you know, straight openings. The other thing that I found is, in doing the research, I found that there were other cities when they looked at this, that they had done mitigation and noise studies. And when City Lift itself documented, now imagine, the proposal that you reviewed had parking bays that you pulled into, and then the City Lift puzzle was a tandem system and it sort of went up and down, all above ground, all the mechanical system was above ground. When a City Lift system had a below-ground, you pulled into bay, everything goes down, their commitment was to 65 decibels for that system. And that causes me concern, because if a system is completely underground and its noise level is 65 decibels, what is going to happen with an apartment building that is nine feet away with direct openings with cavernous, you know, openings between the two? And my request is that that somehow be researched or investigated. I'm not a sound engineer, but logic would kind of say there's a possibility, maybe you close those openings. But in addition is, if there's no noise issue, we don't have an issue. But if there is, we believe that there's a way that we can work together to figure out how to make this a viable project for both parties involved. We as citizens within the city of San Carlos, you know, want to support this project, but it should not be at the detriment of the people who live there, and it should not be the detriment for the noise of the committee within this organization. So the other thing that I found in further research was the competitors of City Lift easily have readily available decibel information within their marketing materials and specifications. It's not easily readily available with City Lift. Maybe they have it, but how can a Sequel Report or how can people in the committee that reviewed this two weeks ago not have that information to you since it's such an important thing to the people in the community? So, Claus, City Lift, Claus, a competitor to City Lift, in their quiet version, when they talk about hydraulics, which are not mechanical, they have hydraulics, they specifically say that the numerous sound control features include hydraulic power mounted with, on rubber pads, steel hydraulic lines are mounted with rubber pipes, supports, and hoses, and et cetera. This machine operates at 67 decibels, and that's their quiet version. So I'm concerned. Now, what's interesting about that is that I personally witnessed six of these operating City Lift systems. And I will tell you, I was surprised. Most of the marketing materials for City Lift have an audio music, beautiful marketing materials behind it. It's not the actual sound of the lift. It is metal on metal on certain components. It's almost like a railway and a track system. And there can be things that can be done to mitigate that, you know? Clearly, there's ways that you can resolve that. But in addition, it almost sounds like at times, like an old arcane power wash system that you put your car through. It's things moving, you hear the slamming. And to have an apartment building and tenants that are now nine feet away in this building, again, causes me concern. And more importantly, that this organization, when you review this information, multiple people who represented the developer, the, you know, the organizations involved, nobody seemed to have noise information. And I think it is a fair request to say that that be something that is considered going forward. I realize it's not on the agenda. I thought that we're going to be having people joining you as a new group, and I wanted the new group to hear that I think going forward, that there's a way for us to work together on this. And I think it's important to consider, even if things have been moving forward, it doesn't mean that we can't make, you know, improvements along the way. And with that, I ask if you have any questions for me, but I have some questions for you regarding that, and I'd like to figure out how we can work together to make sure that there are no sound issues for the people who live next door to this community.
So, our part in this is to make recommendations to the city council, correct? Or should we actually approve the project? I thought we recommended, or is it the final?
There were several items that were recommended for approval. The Sequel document, the mitigated negative declaration, was recommended to the city council for adoption, as well as the ordinance that governs the site. But what the planning commission did approve was the design review certificate, so the design of the building, as well as the conditional use permit for the city density bonus provisions, and the transportation demand management plan. So that's been approved. It is scheduled for city council consideration at their June 24 meeting.
So could we add that, can we still make a recommendation that a noise study be done? And that this, go ahead?
Yeah, now, since the item is not on the agenda this evening, the planning commission cannot make any further recommendations, but staff's certainly going to take this public comment into consideration when providing information to the city council.
I will certainly be attending that meeting.
Yeah, and it's very helpful if you have any questions, just to work through staff, and we can certainly assist you in answering any of those questions as well. Thank you.
I think part of the issue, though, candidly, is when you read a report and it states, you know, point-blank that there is a noise, you know, assessment that says it's going to be within a certain range, I am befuddled that somebody can write a report without having factual knowledge to be able to write that report. So if there is backup supporting information that says this will not be an issue, I would love to have that, because that ensures that none of you folks and none of the organizations have defendant behind, you know, going forward. We are sincerely concerned about the noise going forward on this...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I really don't mean to interrupt you, but as you can see, our city attorney is not here this evening, and I just want to provide just an abundance of caution that we don't get into this discussion further, because it is not on the agenda. The planning commission has already made their recommendations, the 10-day pill period has passed, and I think it's great that you're here tonight so staff can hear your comments. But the most appropriate audience going forward would be the city council. And that's what I would recommend, you attend those council meetings.
Absolutely will. So my question then is, when the Sequel Report was generated?
Excuse me, this is not on the agenda, so...
But I thought, but I thought the agenda said that the staff...
This is public comment, but this is not a Q and A portion, it's you can make your comments to the commission.
Gotcha.
They're part of the record.
Okay.
I would just make the brief response that it looks like you found some interesting research. I personally would be interested in a list of locally installed City Lifts, because I've wanted to see these in operation myself, and I haven't yet. But, you know, it is something we've now referred to the city council, so you should share that research you've found, summarize it best you can with us, I would like to see it, but also with the city council and put that in front of them. If you had done that, you know, two, three weeks ago, we could have considered that as well. But now it's out of our hands. But I would also just echo, it is, you know, this isn't the forum for a back-and-forth discussion, but the staff is certainly available to further work with you as this goes before the city council.
And I appreciate that. Part of the reason why I came is because I thought during that last commission hearing that more information was going to be available regarding that, and I was surprised that the comment that there was no information regarding noise, that caught me by surprise. If somebody had said that two weeks earlier, I would have done this beforehand. I had taken the report at face value that it was based on substance. So I appreciate your comments. Yeah, I'll gladly summarize and put some of the information together. Who should I direct that to, other than attending the next meeting? What's the best course, sending it to you folks? Okay, great. I noticed on the agenda it talks about progress on current projects. My question, just for my own time, is, is the 817 project going to be discussed later on this evening, and should I wait for that, or is that not on the agenda?
That is not on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments and all the work you've done.
Hopefully, it'll make it a better project.
Great, thank you. I hope so too. And the next item is appointment of officers pursuant to municipal code section 2.24.140. Each year, the planning commission shall appoint a chair and a vice chair who shall serve at the pleasure of the planning commission for a period of one year or until successors have been appointed. The planning commission shall also appoint a member of the planning commission to serve as chair of the residential design review committee for a period of one year also. In addition, pursuant to the city council resolution 2018-053, the San Carlos Planning Commission shall further appoint an alternate member of the planning commission to serve as chair of the residential design review committee if the primary planning commissioner is unavailable. New appointments will be seated at the next regular scheduled meeting of the residential design review committee and the planning commission meeting, which now is set for July 1, I believe. Thank you. So we'll go through it this order. Planning commission chair, then vice chair, and then RDRC chair, and then the alternate for RDRC.
So what's the first one?
Chair. Chair is the first. Any questions or discussion?
No, I'd like to make a recommendation or nominate. So I'd like to nominate Commissioner Dugan as the next commissioner chair.
Okay. Commissioner Dugan has been nominated for chair for next year. Any comments from you, Commissioner Dugan?
I would just say I'd be honored to serve as a chair next year. Down will be a tough act to follow, but I'm open to that nomination.
Then I'll second.
Okay. Sounds like we're going to have a unanimous vote here then. We'll call the roll.
Commissioner Dugan?
Can I go last, please?
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Bradley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
All right, congratulations. John?
Thank you. We look forward to a good passing of the baton and your leadership over the next year.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And Chairman Bradley, really I've appreciated learning from you over the past year, and I hope I can bring the calming, orderly process that you bring to these meetings and be as receptive to all the public has to say on items as you do. You do a very nice job of that, and we appreciated all you've contributed over the past year as our chairman.
I appreciate your comments. It's been my pleasure and my duty. I always say that when people thank me for my military service. I know you'll do a good job. I was very impressed with seeing you as a member of the Citizens Academy that we hold here, I think every year. Good program, you were there. I saw you again at the Planning Commission Training Academy in San Mateo, and you've done a lot of things already to set you on your way. And I have a gift here that a friend of mine wrote and I reviewed. It's called "Conflict Meetings and Difficult People." The essential guide, nothing, not at you guys, okay? "The Essential Guide for Members of California's Public Boards, Town Councils, Commissions," meaning planning commissions, agencies, staff, and neighborhood associations, written by Barry Fagan, who is a PhD in planning from Berkeley. And he asked me to review it, and I found it helpful. It's kind of hot off the press, so...
Thank you.
My pleasure. Okay?
This must have been on your shelf as we were dealing with the Single Family Housing Size Initiative and the gun stores zoning issues last year.
Actually, I think I might have received it later after that, but it could have helped.
So you helped by writing a couple chapters, then?
Next, we have electing the planning commission vice chair. That job, of course, is if the chair is unavailable for a meeting, the vice chair steps up to that task, at least temporarily. Or if the chair should have to resign or leave, absent, the vice chair is to take over. Do I hear any motions or questions?
I would like to move to nominate Commissioner Yakaponi to the position of planning commission vice chair.
I'll second that motion. Would you like to say a few words? Other words?
No, not a lot of words. It would be an honor, and with all of the great teaching over the past year, and given my own availability, and it can occasionally be spotty, I think this is a great way to step up leadership, and I'd be honored.
Good.
Terrific, I think you'll do a great job.
Good. Maybe we have roll?
Okay, we'll do the roll. Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Bradley?
Yes, I'm James.
And Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Good, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Look forward to working with you in that new role, even though we're going to be without our, one of our members after tonight. We'll certainly miss her, but...
We already have someone coming in, so you won't be too far too long without it. Probably next meeting, right? Yeah, she's, she's coming in.
I'm glad it's a woman, not another old white guy. Nothing against us, it's just I like diversity. So after vice chair is next, is elected primary residential design review committee chair for one year.
So can we nominate people that aren't present?
The commission certainly can, and I think that was disclosed at your last meeting, when there was a full commission present.
I actually would like to go ahead and nominate Chairman Bradley to the role of primary residential design review committee chair, if he would be receptive to that.
I'd be honored. I'd be honored.
Then I'll second.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley?
Respectfully, yes. Thank you very much. I had that job two years ago, and I learned a lot in it, and I'll look forward to serving again on it for a year. And lastly, elect an alternate residential design review committee chair. That's the alternate, in case the chair is not there.
Did we hear from, anything from Commissioner Roof regarding his preference or availability?
I don't recall anything from Commissioner Roof verbally. Any emails that I have received as an information basis I did forward to the commission.
Right.
I would just chime in to say I served as the alternate for the past year, and I think I had to go to three meetings, and it was very beneficial. I would recommend everyone takes a rotating turn on the RDRC. So I, you know, if it, if there was a strong conflict, I suppose Commissioner Roof could, you know, tender a resignation in the next meeting or so, and we could re-slot it. So I think it'd be safe to nominate him.
Great. I'd like to then nominate Commissioner Roof as alternate.
I'll second that. Since he's not here, he can't speak for himself, but we'll have a vote anyway.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley?
Yes. Let that be a lesson. When you don't come, you get appointed to something, whether you like it or not. So that concludes our nominations and elections and appointments of officers for this whole coming year. Next, we move on to the last item on the agenda then. Is a public hearing. And the procedure for public hearings is the planning staff will first present.
Excuse me, through the chair, I apologize for interrupt, having to interrupt you again, but the next item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes.
Why am I doing this backwards tonight? Okay, yes, I did skip that. Next item will be approval of minutes of the planning commission meeting last June 3rd, 2019. Any corrections, additions, or comments on them? Very fine job, I thought. For only a two-hour meeting, six pages of single-spaced text, a lot of comments, questions, and considerations on that project last time we met.
I'll go ahead and move that the minutes of June 3rd's meeting be approved as stated here.
And I'll second. Roll.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Since I wasn't present, should I abstain? They read fine, so.
Technically, you can approve them and, you know.
Approved.
Okay. Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley?
Approval? Yes. Thank you. Now we're doing our last public, last item on the agenda, which is a public hearing. Planning staff will present a report on the history, physical features, on the application, followed by the staff's recommendations. The applicant will then make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed, and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The planning commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice. The public notice, or in written correspondence, delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speaker's form, found in the back corner, and hand it to any of us, and prior to addressing the commission. And you should come up to the microphone to speak, since the meeting is being recorded, and that assists our planning staff in preparing accurate minutes. The first and only case we have here tonight is 930 Commercial Street, which is APN 046-161-030. Consideration of a conditional use permit for a fitness facility. Lisa?
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners.
Evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so the location for this project is at the north side of Commercial Street, between Old County Road and Industrial. The site is 1.7 acres in area and has two commercial buildings located on the site, as well as with onsite parking. The zoning designation is heavy industrial with a planned industrial general plan designation. The applicant's requesting a conditional use permit to operate a commercial recreation facility in the heavy industrial zoning district.
Can you stop for a moment?
Yes.
And show the notification. I want to make sure this does not include our business, my husband's business at 952 Center.
Cranston. Industrial. It doesn't touch Central.
It should be okay, but I just want to make sure. 952 Center.
Want to just log into it real quick? Okay, we'll pause this part of the presentation for a moment.
Thank you.
We'll take a few minute recess.
I'm sorry, what?
952 Center.
If a commissioner is within 300 feet, they have to recuse themselves and leave the room, so just checking that. Zumba classes move a little faster than this.
The spin ones do, for sure. Not sure about yoga.
You're going to be well outside the distance.
Outside, okay.
Yeah, because Center and Commercial are quite a distance away.
A couple blocks.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure. Wouldn't like break the, break the rules on my last meeting.
It'd be a shame for you to recuse the very last item on your agenda.
I know, isn't it?
So if not Zumba, what is, what's your focus going to be?
So the elevator speech is, it's a boutique fitness center that specializes in personal training, small group classes, and is open to membership as well.
Got it. So general. Yeah.
It's, we're, it's an expansion of Core Total Fitness, which is a personal training studio that owned and operated in San Carlos for almost 10 years now.
Nice. You don't have to get into it all. We'll get the meeting back going, but yeah, I just.
I did enjoy reading it as well, though, and it looks like it'll be a big step for you in the business, yeah?
Yeah, it will. Moved into the location in San Carlos about eight years ago. I'm in a big car that was built on Industrial. And this is kind of like the dream that I've always had. We're almost there.
If it weren't for this delay, it'd be the third thing on the agenda, huh?
You gotta get, you gotta get through us tonight, I guess.
Happy to see there's no opposition.
I was gonna say, there's still time.
I know.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to make sure. I know that area of town's really sort of crunched and. Thank you.
Shall I continue then? We confirmed the properties outside the conflict area.
You open the presentation?
Okay, thank you. So just to give an overview of the site plan, the applicant proposes to occupy the front tenant space, which is approximately 7,200 square feet. The rear tenant space is currently occupied by a warehouse use. And there are 46 parking spaces on this side of the property, 41 parking spaces on the opposite side for the other building. The existing fence that separates the current parking areas will be removed. The applicant will also improve the site to include new accessible parking, a ramp to the entry, and new motorcycle parking. The interior will include a studio space for classes, restroom, showers, office area, and an open equipment area. The applicant describes the business as a boutique-style fitness facility. They will be offering classes, as well as one-on-one personal training. And the hours run from 5:30 in the morning until 10:00 in the evening. They anticipate, you know, kind of at that busiest moment of the day, up to 40 clients at one time with three onsite employees. So the parking requirement for commercial recreation uses, based on our municipal code, is actually evaluated on a case-by-case basis. But to give you a gauge, athletic clubs, so like 24-hour fitness, would require one parking space per 150 square feet. And based on the size of this build, tenant space, that would be 48 parking spaces. However, we take a look at this particular business, their demand, their usage, and try to evaluate it that way. And so, as proposed, there's 46 onsite parking spaces and two bicycle spaces. And the adjacent warehouse use requires four parking spaces. Based on several site inspections I conducted, I noticed that there was ample parking available in front of the building, obviously, as well as onsite, and staff is supportive of the use based on the parking that's provided onsite.
And I'm sorry, the 48 spaces, that's based on both of the buildings onsite?
It's just for comparative purposes. If this was, say, a 24-hour fitness, a full athletic club, that's what the parking requirement would be.
Understood, but that's measuring based on not just the building they're using, but.
It's actually just the tenant space.
Oh, is that right?
Right. It's a very high parking standard. It's one per 150. But the warehouse use only requires four parking spaces, the adjacent business. The public notice was mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the site. This is a typo. My apologies. On May 15th, the notice was published in the newspaper. On May 17th, we've received no public comments. And this is the motion, should you choose to approve the project. And I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions.
If there are none, we'll ask the applicant to.
Actually, just one from me. That's all right. Thank you, Chair. Can you just share how, I'll call it a non, maybe this is a non-conforming use, given that it is not heavy industrial and it's zoned heavy industrial? Is that how we think about it? And that's why it needs a conditional use permit?
Since it's not a traditional industrial use, yes, it does require a conditional use permit. But the code does look at those kind of uses that require those large, open spaces as being compatible in this zoning district. And so we have approved several commercial recreation uses in a traditional industrial zoning area. What I'm impressed with this site is how much parking is available. Most of the sites are a little bit tighter. So we've approved several other kind of personal fitness facilities, like rock and jumpin', and, you know, those kind of climbing and fitness areas, like Ping Pong Planet, and industrial areas.
Great. Thank you.
Do we have a sense of the historical use of this space?
I believe it was Abbey Carpet previously, and the property owner is here so he could shed some light on maybe some other uses if you're interested.
All right. See no more questions. We'll have the applicant come up.
Do you have any specific questions, or just kind of general overview of use?
Anything you'd like to say at this time?
Well, kind of what I touched on a minute ago was that we've been here for almost 10 years now, operating out of Core Total Fitness on Industrial Road. And we've loved being a part of the community and hope to continue doing so as we expand into, into this new facility. We've, we've had, we've had a really great time kind of building a community with, within the gym itself and have had a lot of, have had a lot of great, great events. We've done some fundraising events for local sporting. Let's see. What was that? Now I'm blanking on the name of the school. But anyways, we've had, we've had some fundraisers for some of the local schools. And I think that, you know, given, given the rapid growth in San Carlos with the commercial and residential use, that it would be kind of timely for, for some more options to come along for gym use. And I want to thank you guys for taking the time to hear this matter and hopefully continue to be a part of San Carlos as a business owner.
Could you see with further demand, a need for you, for the business to be open later, 24 hours?
No, that's never really been a part of our model. I think there's, there's a lot of liability concerns that come in there. You know, having staff there overnight, especially in the area, we kind of considered that. But I think, you know, the hours, the 5:30 AM to 10:00 PM, which would only actually be during, during the week, the weekend would actually be slightly more condensed hours, are kind of the general use, and staying open past that point is really more of a liability than anything else, is the way that we've seen it.
Thank you.
Yeah, great. You know, I'm generally supportive of that use, better than a lot of things that could go in there. I would be interested in hearing from the owner on the historic, what he's aware of the building, and also a quick summary of when the last environmental reports were done on the building and, you know, what you can tell me about that.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I'd be happy to answer when I can. We purchased the property, Black Mountain Properties. My name's Tony Bullock, president of Black Mountain Properties. We purchased the building from Tankledge, I believe, about six to eight years ago, about that timeframe. We did a phase one study at the time we purchased it, which came back clean, with no, no issues there. I don't recall the tenant at the time that was in the space when we purchased it. We placed Abbey Carpet in the space. They were there for about the last four to five years, and they used it for additional warehousing of their product. They, their main showroom is in our building at 990 Industrial Road. So that was more of a warehouse extension for them for the last five to six years, four to five years. And it's, and then behind them in the other space, the 930 Commercial is actually two, two spaces in the building. The other tenant is Gallagher, which is also a flooring company. They, they have expressed interest in possibly leaving as well. So we're not sure how much longer their lease is through October. We hope to find another similar quiet type of use for the space as well. And there is the possibility that maybe Rev would be successful enough to maybe expand in that space sometime, at some point in the future. I'd like to say, though, one thing that really drew us as the landlord to Elliot's use. Elliot was a prior tenant of ours when we owned the San Carlos Business Park where he's currently located. We valued him as a tenant and certainly look forward to bringing him back into the fold again. But something that really appealed to me with what he's proposing to do, especially at, at our location in 930, is provide a gym facility that's unique to San Carlos in that it kind of meets a middle market between what San Carlos has already with 24-hour fitness and also the Bay Club. and also the Bay Club. There's really, you've got 24-hour fitness, which is very affordable. I hate to say low-end, maybe, but it's kind of a general, really affordable gym. And then you have the Bay Club, which offers that high-end, expensive amenity. But, you know, for people like that, there's that option. But there's nothing in between. There's no, you know, that has a nice facility yet and provides kind of this full package of membership and personal training, group, group training, corporate-type classes as well. So I thought it really meets a, a demand, I think, that's there in San Carlos that's probably not being served currently. We always welcome the opportunity at Black Mountain to bring a tenant, a previous tenant back into the fold, because we certainly value our business based on long-term relationships, so... And then, in case you're not aware, too, 930 Commercial is also part of 940. So it's one parcel with two buildings. So we also control 940 Commercial as well. So we have parking on both sides of the building. That's not fully utilized due to the nature of the tenants in 940 Commercial, because they're also quiet, small-business-type uses that don't have high parking demands.
Got it. And how long will this lease be, the initial lease?
It'll be a three-to-five-year lease.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Did you provide your name for our minutes?
Oh, yeah.
Or have a slip?
Do you want me to fill out a slip or just...
Orly?
Just state your name, I think.
Tony Bullock, President of Black Mountain Properties.
You did say that, thank you. Okay. Any other comments or questions of the applicant?
Okay, well then, I move that the Planning Commission approves the request of Rev Fitness for a conditional use permit approval to allow a new commercial recreation facility at 930 Commercial Street, APN 46-161-030, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report.
Second that. I forgot to close the public hearing. I'm really, it's a good thing I'm not going to be in this job any longer. No, I've really enjoyed it. So I'll move that we close the public comment.
One second.
Roll.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley.
Closed. Thank you.
Do I need to make the motion again?
No.
I have the motion made by Commissioner Bergman with a second by Chair Bradley. And I will go ahead and take the roll call.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley.
Approved. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good luck.
Good luck in your project. We look forward to seeing the final project.
When do you open? When do you hope to open?
All goes well. We hope to get construction going improvements middle to end of July. And then hopefully be open in October, early December. To kind of, you know, work out all the bugs and maybe play the rock and roll January 1 for all the fitness...
The resolutions.
Resolution crowd.
Be there with open arms.
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Okay, next is reports, correspondent, and general information. Any report on recent city council actions?
Not this evening, Chair.
Thank you. Planning Commission comments or reports?
Yes, I just want to thank, I want to thank everyone. I mean, I've really enjoyed the last six years. It's been six years. And I've learned a lot, and it's not always been fun, but it has always certainly been worthwhile. And I feel very privileged to have been able to hold this position and to hopefully have influenced positive changes in the community. And I especially want to thank all the staff, because we cannot do this job without the staff's work behind the scenes. And I don't think you get enough recognition up front, because the work you do is amazing. And I just, I've enjoyed working with, well, you for two years and the last three guys for one year. And you have some fun stuff coming up in front of you, so... Yeah, I'm going to keep an eye on this like a watch on TV. And laugh. But anyway, I just want to, I'm just very thankful for the kind, the kindness and professionalism that everyone has shown. Thank you very much.
I'd certainly echo that. It's been a pleasure being with you on the, on the commission. And you were the Chair the first year I, I got on. And I learned a lot from you then, and I'm still learning from you. And I appreciate it very much. And now you can finish your doctoral dissertation.
I can finish my dissertation, yes. Yeah, on public housing.
Terrific, oh, that's great.
Yeah.
It's been, just a pleasure working with you, Shannon. And I've learned from you in six years. That's a large commitment in public service, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
And through the chair, if I may also add a couple of comments myself. And I, and I made this earlier at Shannon's last RDRC meeting that she just had. But I just wanted to echo a lot of what the Commissioner said. It's been a pleasure having you on the Planning Commission for six years. And I went back to the agendas. And I believe the first meeting that you attended was the...
Transit Village, public hearing.
For the Transit Village, so...
With a sea of red.
Stepped in and just started, you know, doing, you know, good work right at the very beginning. And I certainly will miss you. I know a lot of staff will. Al is not here this evening, but if you, I'm sure you'll see him again. I know usually we do city proclamations, so I'm sure you're going to be invited to be attending a city council meeting in the near future. But sincerely, thank you very much for your service, and you'll be missed.
Thank you very much.
But we will see you around, I'm sure.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
Once the dissertation's done.
Once the dissertation's done, I'll start hanging out again.
She has a lot of heavy lifting, writing, thinking still to do first, I think.
Do we have any correspondence?
None this evening. And then, through the chair, if you like, I can move on to updates of current projects and upcoming items that are going to be before the commission. So our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, July 1. And on July 1, just before 7:00 p.m., before the, the regular meeting actually starts, we are going to hold a special meeting. We do have to notice it. But this would be a special meeting to have a meet and greet with the newly-appointed Planning Commissioner Ellen Garvey. So you'll have a chance to meet her if you can stop by a little bit earlier at 6:30 that evening. And then likewise, at 5:00, we are going to have a meet and greet with the new RDRC member. The city council also appointed the, a third member to the RDRC. And her name is Heye Young Datwani. And she will be joining the RDRC on Monday, July 1. And I'll go ahead and send out informational email notices so that if any of you would like to attend either of those, you're certainly welcome to. But other than that, as far as regular business will be concerned for Monday, July 1, we have a conditional use permit proposed for a piano bar located at 765 Laurel. This is currently, or has been for a long time, an existing dry cleaning facility right next to the little Pocket Park, otherwise known as Frank Harrington Park. That'll be on the agenda. In addition to that, staff is going to be sending forward zoning amendments for Planning Commission's consideration and recommendation to the city council. These would be amendments on the city's below-market-rate housing plan or program. And that will be presented by the Economic Development and Housing Manager, Martin Romo. I know he's, he was here at the last meeting. So he will be bringing those forward. So once the staff reports come out, or if you have any questions on that, please feel free to reach out to staff. And then looking forward, at the second meeting in July, we have a couple of items that could be ready to be presented. One is the project for Cal Water. It's the second take, tank at, on Melundy Drive. And I know the Planning Commission had given them some direction to address some additional landscaping. They've been working on that, and it looks like they may be ready to go on July 15. Another item that we have is a little bit unique, because we don't get these often, but it is an appeal of staff decision, staff's decision made on determining whether a single-family residence was subject to the hillside ordinance. That will be on the agenda. And potentially, other things that we have coming up is 1091 Industrial. This was a project that was previously rezoned as a planned development for a hotel. And that project hasn't transpired, so there is movement to revert that particular zoning designation back to what it was, which was general commercial industrial. And I'll leave it at that, but that's coming forward, as well as a lot line adjustment. So we have a couple of things in the queue for the commission to look at moving forward. And that is all I have this evening. Thank you.
Sounds like a busy year. With that, we'll adjourn the June 17, 2019 meeting, right at 8:00.
Well done, Chair.
Thank you all.
Thank you for your service.
Can we get a final gavel hit?
Yeah, let's smack it. Just, let's hear it loud.